Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the meeting to order and formally open the 2024 Annual Town Meeting. I've determined that a quorum is present, and I've examined the warrant and find it in order. At this point, if we could rise to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under- That was the warrant, so, yeah, I appreciate it. As you've seen from the warrant, there's a decent-sized agenda, so we do want to keep a pretty good pace going, but we do want to make sure everyone has the time to speak and listen, so. I don't want to sound too wonky, but I just want to thank everyone who's here tonight. In a town of thousands of people, the people that are here this evening will decide the budget, the schools, and much of the direction that the town will take over the next year. So, decisions aren't made on social media, they're not made at the dump on Saturday or the transfer station, but they're made here by the people who show up and vote. So, I thank you for coming and making the time. Just to understand the process, for those of you that may be new to it or just need a refresher, the Select Board establishes the warrant, the articles that you'll hear this evening, and selects the order that those will be heard in. And from there, several committees meet, they discuss the articles, they meet with the Select Board, make recommendations, those articles are fine-tuned, and then what is before you tonight is what comes. So, I want to thank the Select Board and the committees for their time leading up to tonight. At check-in, everyone should have received the town meeting packet, and I just wanted to take two seconds to kind of go through that. Town meeting in Massachusetts is governed by our bylaws and a publication that's called Town Meeting Time. It's a little book that many town meetings use in the state. So, it's my job to make sure that we follow those rules. I'm your town moderator, I have no role other than to make sure that the meeting runs smoothly and that we do follow those rules. So, that's what I'll be referring to this evening. If there's, at a point, we are not understanding something or what's going on, feel free to raise your hand and come to the microphone, and we can clarify that. Again, going through the guide, just to understand, you'll hear things about the warrant, and you'll hear things about the motions. So, the warrant is meant to give everyone public notice of what may come before the meeting this evening, but the motions, the motions that are made are what you're actually voting on. So, they may vary a little different from the warrant, but listening to the motions and understanding them is what ultimately you'll be taking action on. In terms of what happens, a motion will be made, someone will second it. I'll turn to the person making the motion to ask them to briefly summarize what the issue is, and then at that point, open it up for questions. If you do have questions, the meeting not only is being recorded, but also for audio purposes, you'll need to come to the microphone in each column and wait to be called on. When you are called on, just state your name. You don't need to state your number, but if you could state your street address, and then proceed from there, that will be the process. If at any point anyone needs the motion that's before you repeated, you- Those amendments need to be in writing, so if there is a motion that is before you, and you decide to amend it, you can come down to the front table, and we can help you write out that motion or amendment, and go from there. With that, I'd like to introduce the head table. Again, my name is Dan Graves, I'm the town moderator, and to my right-
Lisa Mead, Town Council. Casey Warren, Town Administrator. Cassie Sandrell, Town Clerk.
Brenda Hill, Town Accountant.
Trevor McDaniel, Select Board Board of Health.
Carolyn Ness, Select Board Board of Health.
Tim Hilchi, Select Board Board of Health.
Dave Sharp, Finance Committee Personnel Committee.
Julie Chalfont, Finance Committee.
Beth Brown, Finance Committee.
Mark Brennan, Finance Committee Capital Improvements Planning Committee Chair.
Margaret Nardowitz, Finance Committee.
Jim Cambius, Finance Committee and Library Board.
John Porewski, Finance Committee.
All right, now, there's still a few people checking in, but we are going to begin. So, I have two initial motions. I move that the reading of all articles be waived, and that prior to the reading of a motion under the article, the moderator may briefly summarize the content of the article to be considered, and further, that unless objection is raised, the reading of detailed motions be waived, where the article as printed can, in the opinion of the moderator, be incorporated by reference in any motion presented.
Second.
This is just basically a process that allows us to essentially summarize some of the things that are before you without having to go into full detail. Again, if there's ever questions that the summary doesn't cover, feel free to stand up, and we can go into more detail, but it's meant to move the meeting along. Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. I move that the following people be allowed to address the audience during town meeting: Attorney Lisa Mead, Town Council; Brenda Hill, Town Accountant; Casey Warren, Town Administrator; Darius Modesto, Superintendent; Shelley Pareda, Director of Business Administration, Frontier Regional; Tina Gemme, Principal, Deerfield Elementary School; Richard Martin, Superintendent, Franklin County Tech School; Russ Cobris, Business Manager, Franklin County Tech School; Jessica Corwin; Josie Silva; Ariselli McCoy; Jamin On; Joshua Sparks, South County EMS Chief. By your town bylaws, only people that are residents of Deerfield are allowed to speak at tonight's meeting. Often, there are issues that come before the town that are not, that individuals who are not residents may have information to share, so this allows them to speak at the meeting. Any questions?
I have one question.
Yes.
We, I didn't know if Cassie, our town clerk, needs to be on that list as well?
Yes.
Okay. That was missed, I just thought we'd add it if we could.
Absolutely.
To make a motion to add Kathleen Cassie Sandrell, Town Clerk.
Second.
We'll make that a friendly amendment. So, all those in favor of the motion as presented. Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Mr. McDaniel.
Sure, thank you.
Okay. For the past few years, we've been using a consent agenda, which allows us to move through some of the, what we'll call, non-controversial articles a little quicker. So, I'm going to ask Ms. Shores Ness to make a motion to state the letter before each item, and then if anyone would like to talk on the particular item, you just yell out "hold," and we'll come back to those, but otherwise, we'll do them all at once. So, with that, Ms. Shores Ness, Article One.
I move the town approve Article One on the following matters: A, B, C, D, E, F, and G, as set forth in the warrant.
Second.
Ms. Shores Ness?
The town of Deerfield gratefully acknowledges the countless gifts and non-monetary gifts made by all the town, nonprofit partners, and this article combines several of the annual requests into one article to expedite the business of the town meeting.
Are there any questions? All those in favor of the motion as presented. Opposed? That motion carries. Excuse me just a moment. Article Two, same process, this is a consent motion, so several items all at once. Mr. Hilchi?
On Article As, B, and C, I move the town transfer from free cash for the following items A, B, and C, as set forth below: a reserve fund appropriation, an OPEB liability trust fund appropriation, and an out-of-district placement vocational education appropriation.
Second.
Mr. Hilchi, briefly.
So, this year, we reduced the reserve fund appropriation by $20,000 to $100,000. I might actually request help from the Finance Committee to fully explain this reserve fund, but I will take up OPEB, which is other post-employment benefits that are required by the, that the town is required to set aside for benefits that our employees are supposed to receive. We only fund this at about 4%, so it's a large liability that keeps building up year after year. And the vocational, the Smith Vocational Tech School appropriation reflects the number of students that have opted to go there, and this covers their tuition and transportation costs of the school. Reserve fund, over to you, Julie.
Finance Committee, would you like to be heard?
I would like them to explain-
It doesn't work that way. Finance Committee, would you like to be heard?
Oh, thank you.
Just, reserve fund is money that is set aside that the Finance Committee has control over, that can be used only for unforeseen and unextraordinary, and extraordinary expenses that come up during the year. So, if there's something very unexpected that happens, we have funds set aside that can be used to cover that. Finance Committee would vote to do that, and if it's not used, it rolls into free cash for next year.
Thank you.
Any questions? All those in favor of the motion as presented. Opposed? That motion carries. Article Three, Mr. McDaniel.
I move the town approve the maximum spending amounts for the revolving funds established in the Deerfield General Bylaws, Chapter 20, Section 20-3, Departmental Revolving Funds pursuant to general law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2, as set forth in the warrant. Second.
Mr. McDaniel?
This is just an annual vote, setting the maximum amount of spending limits in these revolving funds for the recycling program, the parks and recreation, and planning.
Any questions? All those in favor of the motion as presented. Opposed? That motion carries as well. Article Four, Mr. Sharp?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In my role as a member of the Personnel Committee, not the Finance Committee here, I'm moving that the town amend Chapter 35 Personnel of the Deerfield General Bylaws by deleting the entire chapter and substituting in its place the following language to become effective on July 1st, 2024, as presented in this handout.
Second.
Mr. Sharp?
This article seeks to bring the town essentially up-to-date into legal compliance with state and federal requirements. The change is intended to allow the town to create a personnel administration system using a policy manual to stay compliant with state and federal laws as they change. It will also change the composition of the Personnel Board to include two Select Board appointees, one moderator appointee, one elected employee member, and maintain one Finance Committee member, and also maintain the town administrator or their designee as an ex officio non-voting member. It will maintain responsibility of the Personnel Board for wage review and classification of positions in town. It'll clarify roles of the Personnel Board and Select Board in policy development, and the process to change or add policies to a personnel manual. Through the addition of the elected voting employee member, the bylaw also seeks to create a more democratic process to give employees a, quote, "seat at the table," so they can participate, excuse me, in the development of policies that directly affect them.
Is there anyone from the Personnel Board that would like to be heard? Any questions? All those in favor? That motion carries. Article Five, Mr. Sharp?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town adopt a Classification Compensation Plan per the Deerfield General Bylaws, Chapter 35 Personnel, Article Three, Classification Compensation Plan for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024, as presented in this handout.
Second.
Mr. Sharp?
Couple things, this is done annually, obviously, to set pay and step raises and things like that. There was a Personnel Board recommended a change to the table in the warrant for two reasons. We identified a change to Grade G, removing the EMS chief from the list, and we also identify the positions currently classified under Grade G, but they're not included on the plan as they are contracted positions under specific general laws. Removing these titles from the Classification Compensation Plan is past practice of the town to consistently recognize these contracts as having different pay and benefit structures. These types of contracts exist to capture distinctive employment characteristics and to identify specific terms that allow towns to attract and retain qualified staff.
Any questions? All those in favor of the motion as presented? Opposed? That motion carries as well. Article Six, Ms. Shores Ness?
I move that the town transfer $30,000 from the Vocational Education Appropriation to fund a fiscal year 2024 shortfall related to snow and ice removal expenses.
Second. Ms. Shores Ness?
This is money that we appropriated in the current budget for students to attend Smith Vocational School this past year, and actually, less students actually attended, so we have money in that count, and we would shift that over to the snow and ice excess expenses that we, that went beyond our appropriation this year.
Any questions? All those in favor of the motion as presented? That motion carries. Article Seven, Mr. Hilchi?
I move that the town transfer $1,726-
Nope.
Oh, I'm sorry, $1,726. Sorry, folks, didn't, just waking you up out there. $1,726.84 from the Sewer Enterprise Fund retained earnings to pay FY 2023 bills for testing services at the old Deerfield Wastewater Treatment Facility. Vote to transfer $397.20 from South County Emergency Medical Services, also known as SCEMS, retained earnings, to pay various individuals for overtime earned in FY 2023, and a portion of FY 2022, as required under the Fair Labor Standards Act, FLSA, and to vote to transfer $376.64 from free cash to pay an FY 2023 bill for publication costs.
Mr. Hilchi?
So, there were $397.20, which represents the cost to pay previous employees at the South County EMS. We were not taking into account laws that are covered in the Fair Labor's, the fair, yeah, the, anyway, they weren't being paid the correct rate for overtime when they were on shifts, Fair Labor Standards Act, there we are. And so, this is a very small amount of money, and it covers employees to bring them back up to the pay that they should have received for those overtime hours. The town became aware in March 2024 that overtime was not calculated correctly. FLSA overtime calculations should include a shift differential for, in each week, work week, and once the error was found, the EMS chief and the treasurer worked diligently to correct the current payroll and make changes to the payroll sheets moving forward. There's a two-year look-back period for these calculations, so the treasurer began the process to recalculate overtime for FY 2023 and the period of March-June 2022.
Any questions? All those in favor of the motion as presented? All those opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Article Eight, Ms. Shores Ness?
I move that the town transfer from free cash the amount of $32,214 to a special fund established pursuant to Chapter 77 of the Acts of 2023, Section 9, for the purposes of using opioid settlement money received by the town in fiscal year 2023 for opioid use disorder, OUD. Treatment, support programs for people with OUD in treatment and recovery, connects to the care for people with or at risk of developing OUD, harm reduction efforts to prevent overdose deaths, or other opioid-related harms, support of the diversion and deflection program, strategies for criminal justice involved persons with OUD, support of pregnant or parenting women and their families, including babies with NERONADO Abstinence Syndrome, and to prevent misuse of opioids and implement prevention education.
Second. Ms. Shores Ness?
This article seeks to transfer $32,214 in opioid settlement funds received in 2023, which rolled into free cash at the end of the fiscal years while the municipalities waited for the legislative legislature in conjunction with the Department of Revenue to change how the towns would hold the money. Until Chapter 77 of the Acts of 2023 were enacted, towns could only hold those funds in stabilization accounts. This change creates more flexibility and allows the town to spend the funds for purposes outlined in this article without prior appropriation through town meeting.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion as presented? Opposed? Article Nine is the budget. I was hoping we'd have everyone in and checked in by now, but I think we're still waiting. So, at this point, Ms. Shores Ness, why don't you start the motion, if you would?
I move the moderator read the amounts recommended to be appropriated under this article as referenced in the warrant, and unless objection is made, each item recommended in the report of the Finance Committee shall be tentatively accepted as appropriated for the purpose stated. If an objection is made to any recommendation, such appropriation shall be taken separately, and the amount thereof and the manner of the taking, the same, shall be determined by the vote of the meeting and tentatively accepted. One vote shall be taken appropriating each amount, so accepted as a single appropriation, not to be exceeded.
Second.
Essentially, the motion, the budget is presented in the handout, and there are pages, two or three pages, of line items for each budget. And so, what we've done in years past is I have read every single line item. If there's anything that you'd like to come back to, ask questions on, or discuss further, if you can just yell out a clear "hold," we'll continue to go through the whole list, and then at the end of me reading the whole list, we'll go back to the "holds." So, this kind of lets us go through everything, and then come back to the ones that there is going to be some discussion on. And before we do any of that, the Finance Committee has met, and they've put together a presentation of eight minutes that they want to present to the town before we start that matter. So, with that, the Finance Committee.
Except I was told eight minutes was too long, so we're going to talk really fast as soon as the slides come up. So, this is a budget, this is an overview of the FY 2025 budget, it's an overview of what Finance Committee and Select Board and numerous other people have been talking about for the past five months. And there it is, next slide. So, the revenues that we have received, that we are expected to receive next year, as usual, the vast bulk of that will be-
Sorry about that.
-the property tax, oh, there we go, will be property taxes, so about 75% of our revenues are property taxes. The rest is made up of local receipts, funding from the state, free cash, and then a very small percentage is other. If you look at the property tax line, you know that Prop 2 and 1/2 limits the increase to property taxes of 2 and 1/2% plus new growth plus excluded debt. In the bottom right-hand corner, you see the list of excluded debt that we have for FY 25. It's Frontier Regional, the Highway Garage, and the Wastewater Treatment Plant. If you picked up your handout, you can see that Frontier Regional expects to pay off their piece this coming fiscal year, so next year, when we come back, that line will have dropped off, but I expect the library will be showing up at that point. Next slide. The expenses that we have, the omnibus budget is an increase of 4.6%. You can see that about 2/3 of the way down the line. If you look at the other one, I want to point out, if you look at the next-to-last line there, you can see that our non-recurring expenses or the capital expenses we have are dropping fairly significant from last year to this year, and we will talk about that more, but that's basically because we didn't have funding available to spend on capital. There were a number of capital requests that were submitted that were not approved for funding for this year because, basically, we don't have the funds available to do that. Next slide. If you look at, this is sort of how our expenses lay out by category, the education category is bigger than if you add up the numbers from the previous slide, because we took the benefits that can be accrued to the people employed by the schools and included that in that category. So, that brings education up to about 63%, and the others fall out, as you can see there. Next slide. So, the, the, I don't know what to say about this. So, the, these are the things that really changed in the omnibus budget. So, across the board, we saw utilities, benefits, and insurance, they just went up. Those are things we don't have a lot of control over, so those are increases that you see throughout. Baseline personnel costs increased 4 and 1/2%, as you just heard. It's a 2% cost of living adjustment was recommended by the Personnel Board, and then we have the 2 and 1/2% normal step increases, so pretty much everybody on the Classification Compensation Plan has a 4 and 1/2% increase. We have quite a few employees who are under contract instead of on the Class Comp Plan, but they see similar increases in their, in their salaries. So, there are also some, some specific changes. These are listed in decreasing order of dollar value impact, which is, I don't know, you got to list them somehow. So, that's how they're listed. The first one is South County EMS. There's a new South County EMS director. He is putting some changes into place that should allow South County EMS to increase their revenues over the upcoming years, and we expect the amount that we spend on SCEMS, the subsidy that the towns have to provide on SCEMS, to drop over the next few years, and we're quite hopeful that that happens. Second, we have turnover of two key positions in town of the upcoming year. Both of these folks expect to retire, so there's some funding in place to allow a smooth transition. Hopefully, we'll be able to hire somebody new in and have a, you know, a bit of an overlap and be able to do it. Brenda expects to retire at the end of next year, so we will get to see her at next town meeting, but very quickly, I want to give a shout-out to Kevin Scarborough, who will no longer be the Highway Superintendent next year if he retires as he plans. Kevin has given very, oh, do you guys have something you want to say?
What, we're thanking somebody, Brenda as well.
Yeah, yeah, we get to thank her next year, because she'll still be here next year. But Kevin has given incredibly dedicated service to the town over many, many years, and especially this past year with all the work that they did on the roads, so, hooray for Kevin.
Yes, thank you, Kevin.
So, back to the budget stuff, third line down, we, we as a town have made the decision over the past several years to hire some new people. There's a new planner, we've split the clerk and treasurer position, there's some new responsibility in the Assistant Town Administrator role. We are seeing those positions kind of percolate out, there are adjustments in this budget, increasing hours for some of these folks to get, as we get the responsibilities ironed out, so that's an increase to the budget. PFAS testing has been mandated, that's a fairly significant expense for the landfill and the wastewater treatment plant both. The senior center has increased the hours of their staff. Most of the salary for these folks are actually covered by grants, which is lovely. Their benefits are not, so the benefits you see increasing, and then also, there's increased, like, administration of the grants, so there's increased work by the folks in Town Hall to support the grants that are supporting the senior center. There are increased inspections for food trucks, we're seeing a lot of food trucks at, you know, tree- We're seeing a lot of food trucks at Treehouse, at those schools. That increases the health inspector work, but we also get fees for those inspections, so that's offset in the revenues line, so we see more incoming revenues to support that. We buy a police cruiser every year, and the cost of the police cruiser increased this year. And the last one is legal expenses. We pay a baseline retainer, and the price for that retainer has increased for next year, but we also pay separately for advice on labor issues, and we have several contracts that are up for renegotiation next year, so we expect that line item to increase as well. Next slide. All right, this is the last slide. So first off is kind of the basic comment. We all went through every line item on this budget, and everything falls within the legal constraints required. ...for the omnibus budget, which means that free cash is not available to pay for capital. So if you look at the second line there, we already said we're not doing a lot of capital expenses because we don't have the funding available. Last year, we spent a lot of reserves on that, so those reserves are no longer available. This year, we're spending a lot of free cash on our recurring expenses, so they're not available. So this is really not sustainable, and we need to be looking at this pretty focused on this over the upcoming year. But we are excited about the SCAMS plan for improved revenue generation, and that's all I had, I think.
Thank you. That was eight minutes, Julie. That was perfect. Thank you. So with that, we're going to start on page twenty-eight of the handout, and I will be reading every single line, so bear with me. Moderator, five hundred dollars. Select Board salaries, sixteen thousand dollars. Again, if there's any item you want to come back to, you'll just yell out "hold." Select Board staff salaries, three hundred seventy-eight thousand, four hundred ninety-seven dollars. Select Board administration expense, nineteen thousand dollars. Finance Committee, two hundred and fifty dollars. Accountant salary, one hundred twenty-six thousand, five hundred thirty-two dollars. There's a hold. Accountant expense, eighteen thousand, two fifty. Assessor salaries, eleven thousand. Assessor's administrative expense, I'm sorry, administrative assistant, seventy-seven thousand, six hundred ninety-nine dollars. Assessor's expense, nineteen thousand, one hundred ten dollars. Assessor's quin-quinennial recertification, twenty-two thousand dollars. Treasurer-collector salaries, one hundred fifty-one thousand, nine hundred dollars. Treasurer-collector expense, thirty-six thousand, two hundred fifty dollars. Legal expense, one hundred five thousand dollars. Personnel board, five hundred dollars. IT hardware, six thousand dollars. PEG access capital expense, four thousand dollars with a hold. Contracted services, two hundred sixty-eight thousand, three hundred thirty-four dollars. Town clerk salaries, one hundred nine thousand, five hundred twenty-seven dollars. Town clerk expense, twenty-six thousand, fifty dollars. Conservation commission, two thousand dollars. Open space committee, two hundred and fifty dollars. Planning board, two thousand dollars. Zoning Board of Appeals, one thousand dollars. Agricultural Commission, one hundred dollars. Energy Committee, a thousand dollars. Town office building maintenance, one hundred six thousand, eight hundred dollars. Town office expense, seventeen thousand dollars. General insurance, seventy-eight thousand dollars. Police payroll, one million, one hundred twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred sixty-five dollars. There's a hold. Police Department expense, one hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred dollars. There's a hold. Police Department cruiser, sixty-five thousand dollars. Inspections Department payroll, one hundred seventy-eight thousand, three hundred twenty-four dollars. Inspections Department expense, four thousand, nine hundred fifty dollars. Emergency management, two thousand, eight hundred dollars. Animal control, twenty-two thousand, two hundred sixty-six dollars. Deerfield Elementary School, five million, three hundred forty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Frontier Regional School, four million, three hundred seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars. Frontier Regional Debt Service, nineteen thousand, three hundred sixty dollars. Frontier Regional Transportation, ninety-four thousand, eight hundred ninety-four dollars. Franklin Tech Assessment, six hundred and sixty thousand, seven dollars. Franklin Tech Debt Service, eighteen thousand, one hundred eighty-three dollars. General Highway Payroll, six hundred forty-five thousand, seven hundred thirty-nine dollars. General Highway Expense, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Winter Snow and Ice Removal, ninety-five thousand dollars. Street Lighting, fifteen thousand dollars. Transfer Station Expense, two hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred dollars. Test Well Monitoring Maintenance, sixty-one thousand dollars. Board of Health Payroll, one hundred and one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Board of Health Expense, eleven thousand, five seventy-five. Emergency COVID Expense, zero dollars. Council on Aging, two hundred and fifty dollars. Senior Center Expense, ninety thousand, two hundred ninety-nine dollars. Veterans District Assessment, fifteen thousand, five hundred and five dollars. Veterans Benefits, twenty-two thousand dollars. ADA Coordinator, two hundred and fifty dollars. Tilton Library, two hundred and fifteen thousand, three hundred ninety-one dollars. Summer Swim Program, six thousand, three hundred and ten dollars. Drytown Beach Expense, thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars. Recreation Department Director's Salary, sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. Historical Commission, one thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars. Veterans Day Memorial Day Expense, two thousand dollars. Maturing Debt, four hundred and one thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Interest on Maturing Debt, two hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and four dollars. Interest on Temporary Loans, five thousand dollars. FERCOG Core Assessment, forty-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Unfunded Sick Leave and Vacation, ten thousand dollars. Franklin County Regional Retirement, six hundred and forty-six thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars. Workers' Compensation, fifty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars. Unemployment Insurance, twenty thousand dollars. Group Insurance, Town, four hundred and nine thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. Group Insurance, School, seven hundred and eighty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars. Medicare Insurance, one hundred and twenty thousand, eighty-nine dollars. So we will go back to the holds. Again, anyone who made a hold, if they have a comment or a question, if they can come down to the microphone. And we would start with the hold on accountant's salary. Good evening. If you could just state your name and the street you live on.
Sure. Mike Gilmore, Allen Drive.
Thank you.
Just a question, given the increase in the accountant's salary, is that due to looking at what it's going to cost to replace you, or is it because there's an overlap? Because there seems to be a pretty significant salary increase there.
Someone from the Select Board would like to address that, or?
Yeah, you're right. It is the overlap. It's not what it will go going forward, but we wanted to have staff in there to be with Brenda for a good amount of time to kind of transfer that over, and wanted to have the funds to cover that person, and then it'll drop back down once, unfortunately, Brenda leaves us.
Once I'm gone.
Once you're gone. But yeah, that's all it is.
Any other questions? Mr. Gilmore, are you comfortable releasing your hold, or? Thank you.
Thank you.
We had a hold on PEG access capital expense. Good evening.
Evening. M.A. Swedland, twenty-two A, Snowberry Circle. What is it?
Fair.
Great question.
Someone from the Select Board, or?
Do you want to hit it, Carolyn?
No, go ahead. So PEG access is, capital is the funding we use for FCAT for capital equipment. So FCAT funds all of, you know, films all of our meetings and does all of our items, and this is the capital that we fund them each year as part of a contract through Comcast, I believe, right?
Right.
Did I get that right?
So the contract with Comcast, they give us the four thousand dollars for that specific purpose in the previous fiscal year, so then in this fiscal year, we have to allocate it.
Thank you. Comfortable removing the hold? Thank you. We had a hold on police payroll.
Mike Gilmore, Allen Drive. So I wasn't sure whether it was this line or the next one, but I've heard from other people in town that we, like other communities, are having a hard time getting officers, and as a result of that, we need to pay our officers overtime in order to cover shifts that may not be available. And in the event that we can't cover that, then my understanding is from talking to other folks that state police would end up being a backup. My real question is, does the budget itself maintain adequate salary and overtime pay and whatever is necessary to provide in-town police presence for all shifts?
Select Board, or Police Chief?
Police Chief.
Chief?
Yeah. Hi, I'll try and talk. Can everybody hear me okay? Good. Okay. Good evening, John Pachork, the Chief of Police in Deerfield. I have the pleasure of serving with you guys. Now just approaching twelve years as your Chief of Police. This budget as presented provides two officers, twenty-four-seven, to the community, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. So when you call, as long as they're not tied up on another call, they are coming. There are two officers on. Please do not call us the next morning and tell us you heard a sound at two-thirty in the morning. Call immediately. They are there. They are on duty. There has been a few times that we've had to drop down to one person on midnights just due to staffing issues, but we do not close. We work hand-in-hand with the state police. They back us up, and quite frankly, on the Ninety-One Corridor, we frequently back them up. Not only do our females assist them with searches routinely, Greenfield, Montague, and State Police, we work hand-in-hand with those folks, and we're on first-name basis with every single one of them. So this is a well-presented budget. The contract for the patrolmen and supervisors is due up this fall. We will reevaluate our ten-town comparable, so it is a great question, and we'll figure out where we come to at the negotiation table. Thank you.
Mr. Gilmore? And was that your hold on the next one as well, and did that cover? That's it for holds. So with that, Ms. Schorsness?
I move...
Oh, I'm... Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay. I move that the town appropriate eighteen million, two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and two dollars to fund the accepted amounts voted, and to meet this appropriation, transfer sixty thousand dollars from overlay surplus, sixty-six thousand, five hundred from the SCAMS Enterprise Fund, fifteen thousand, nine hundred from the South County Senior Center Fund, seven, seventy-three thousand, seven hundred from the Sewer Enterprise Fund, five thousand, eighty-six dollars from the Receipts Reserve for Debt, four thousand, seven hundred from the Wetlands Protection Fund, ten thousand dollars from the Cemetery R R A Fund, and one hundred and seventy thousand, eighty, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars from free cash, and raise and appropriate seventeen million, eight hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
Second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion? That carries.
Thank you.
Article ten, Mr. McDaniel.
I move the town appropriate two million, one hundred and sixty-four thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty-twenty-four, to fund the Sewer Wastewater Treatment Plant Enterprise Fund as set forth in the warrant.
Mr. McDaniel?
So this is the budget to run both plants for the year. It includes revenues from user and hookup fees, retained earnings, and investment income of two million, one hundred and sixty-four thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars, and expenses will be the salaries and benefits, as you can see in the chart, operating expenses, debt service, indirect administrative costs, and operational reserve.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor of the motion as presented? Opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Article eleven, Mr. Hiltche.
I move that the town appropriate the sum of one million, seven hundred eighty-three thousand, four hundred ninety-seven dollars, and transfer from free cash the sum of four hundred forty-four thousand, three hundred sixty-eight dollars to fund the South County Emergency Medical Service Enterprise Fund for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty-twenty-four, and to meet the town of Deerfield's allocated share of costs as follows.
Second. Mr. Hiltche.
So this is a year in transition for SCAMS. We have a new chief in place. We have set aside in a previous year money for a new ambulance, but in order to do that, a lot of the retained earnings from previous years was utilized, and we are looking to increase the services that the SCAMS are providing for our three towns as well as to help surrounding towns as possible. And if you have any questions specifically, I believe that Mr. Moderator, if you could let the new SCAMS chief speak for these things.
Sure. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion as presented? That motion carries. Article twelve, Ms. Schorsness.
I move that the town transfer sixteen thousand from the SCAMS Enterprise Fund retained earnings, transfer fifteen thousand from the SCAMS Rent Stabilization Account, reallocate and transfer thirty thousand dollars from the SCAMS Exhaust Project approved in Article Eight at Annual Town Meeting on June twelfth, twenty-twenty-one, and reallocate and transfer forty-four thousand from the SCAMS Cardiac Monitor Project approved in Article Ten at the Annual Town Meeting on April twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three, to fund the additional FY twenty-twenty-four projects as set forth in the warrant.
Second. Ms. Schorsness, what does that mean?
After a lovely gift from Greenfield of their used exhaust system and hard work from Lori McCombe, we were able to get a grant to cover the cardiac monitor and return the funds to our retained earnings for the exhaust system, and we're reallocating them to fund the station alert system, the paramedic intercept electric vehicle, and the paramedic intercept E V charger.
Any comments or questions? Yes, we can just make it to the microphone?
Fred Bechta from Eastern Avenue. I want to question the use of an electric vehicle for emergency services. It doesn't seem really feasible to have something you have to worry about a short runtime, especially with using emergency lights, you know, maybe a computer onboard, et cetera. It seems between that and the extra expense for a charger system in there, is this feasible? Is our EMS chief here?
I would like our chief to answer that question.
Yes, yes. Chief, if you can make it to the microphone, that'd be great. Chief, if you'd just like to take one second, introduce yourself as well.
Hi, Joshua Sparks. I'm the Chief of South County EMS. Thank you for the question. I think I initially shared the reservations surrounding electric vehicles for emergency services work. We have seen over, since twenty-eighteen, the technology has changed substantially. There are services all over the world using electric vehicles, and the capacity that we're attempting to use it in. It was interesting to note that as the police cruiser increased in cost, the price on electric vehicles is decreasing, narrowing that margin. So what we would have spent on a very similar vehicle, we can now put into the charger, we're still spending the same basic amount of money, but we need it to basically run for twelve hours, which it can very easily do. Does that answer the question adequately? Anything else I can answer about that? Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion as presented? That motion carries by two-thirds majority. Article thirteen, Mr. McDaniel. Article 13, Mr. McDaniel.
No.
Might be me.
Okay, sorry.
Mr. Hiltch?
Yep. I move that the town transfer $101,500 from free cash, $42,600 from Sewer Enterprise Fund retained earnings, and $35,500 from SCAMS Enterprise Fund retained earnings to fund the capital improvement plan for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024 as set forth within the warrant.
Second.
Mr. Hiltch?
Where is my little... So, um... This is going to... Is there a chart available with this in the printout? It's on the next page? Okay.
Yep.
So DES... This is only the 105. So DES Air Conditioning Phase 2, or six rooms, there's $72,000 is the... Yes, $72,000. That's going to make it easier for students to sit through, to sit into their classrooms with the heat on the... Getting hotter in the spring and staying hotter longer in the fall. So this is a several-year plan to approach several rooms a year so that we can improve the learning conditions for the kids. There's also $17,000 for a server replacement. The town hall computers that run off this server is... Are critical to the operations of the town and the server has reached or exceeded its useful life. And finally, there's... The Senior Center has received a very favorable grant to buy a Senior Center van to... And our portion of that fund is, that funding is to $12,500 with other funding coming from the other towns who cooperate in the Senior Center.
Did you want to hit the other items with retained earnings and SCAMS or...?
Let's see. Who wrote this? What's that?
I can answer.
Yes, and if you could have the Capital Improvement Planning Committee Chair speak about the rest of this.
Sure, absolutely. Capital planning?
Yes, so some of these projects... Well, actually, I should start by saying we actually evaluated 26 capital requests and unfortunately had to whittle these down. The three that Mr. Hiltch just talked about would be coming out of free cash. And then we have two other capital improvements. One is the wastewater treatment plant truck. This would be coming out of the retained earnings for the enterprise fund. We are very lucky that we actually have folks who work at the wastewater treatment facility who can plow. So they will be not only paying for this truck out of their own account, but will be saving the town on contracted services by not having to have someone else plow. And then we also have a replacement stretcher that's going to be coming out of the SCAMS Enterprise Fund. So that is not going to hit free cash. So those are the last remaining projects there.
Any comments or questions? Yes, you can just make it to the microphone?
Hi, Lily Dwight, South Mill River Road. I have a question about the server. $17,000 for a server seems very high. And I'm also wondering, given the security concerns, shouldn't we be looking at cloud services which are SOC 2 compliant instead of trying to do this ourselves?
Mr. Hiltch?
I would request that Casey Warren, Town Administrator, speak to this.
Warren?
Or Mark Brennan. Whomever prefers.
Oh, Mark. Casey?
Tag him in.
All right, so very good question. During my day job, I'm actually a...
Mr. Brennan, we had called on Casey. We can go back to his...
Oh, oh, I thought you said tag him in. Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mark. You can ask him better than I can.
Okay. So during my day job, I'm an engineer and I did, you know, evaluate this. It's a very legitimate concern. It's one of the questions I had actually asked. This server has a couple of problems. The first is it's outside of warranty, so a lot of the warranty, you know, the contracted, you know, services for, you know, server hardware is, you know, we're no longer eligible for once we reach the end of the warranty there. And then also, a lot of these are files that will be stored locally. So the town does have contracted IT services that can make sure that all of our files are safe and secure and are being stored with, you know, best practice, security best practices in mind. But what we're looking to do is store this locally. $17,000 may seem high, but if we were to go with some sort of, you know, cloud service, we would be shifting that capital cost to a much higher operational cost over the course of the server's lifetime. So that was the reason why we wanted to support the server replacement.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, if you can make it to the microphone, please?
My name is Janet Ward and I live at Tubby Tyler Way. And I was just asking how many of the phases of this? This is in Phase 2. How many more phases that have to go, have to be finished? And then, as if I calculated correct, we're paying $12,000 for either two to six rooms. What's the square footage that it...? To me, that seems a little bit high, too.
So I can, I can...
Mr. McDaniel?
I could answer some of this. So this is the second phase. What we've been doing with the DES is getting the AC units is that we're working with Eversource to get rebates back on this. So it's about $9,000 a room to do mini splits in the room, and that includes the unit putting it in. But then we do get rebates and we're trying to get several more rooms. Last time, we were able to do a couple more rooms because we're getting rebates back to fund additional rooms. Probably Bill Hildreth or Darius Modesto might be here that would be able to answer how many more rooms. We have a lot of rooms at DES. It's going to take a while to get through most of them. I can't remember how many we've done already. Darius, do you happen to know if you're handy?
Mr. McDaniel, if we can just kind of keep everything directed to the moderator. It's your own town rules. I'm just trying to keep things in order. But Mr. Modesto?
Good evening, Darius Modesto, your Superintendent. So we're in Phase 2 of three phases. There's 14 more rooms to do.
Thank you.
This doesn't include larger areas. We're just concentrating on the classrooms. And we're also working with the Energy Committee to work on getting a building management system to support those so that we can have the dual cooling and heating in the classrooms being controlled that way as well. So that's where we're at.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor of the motion as presented? Opposed? That motion carries. Article 14?
Good evening. I'm Julie Caswell. I am the Vice Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. And I move that the town transfer $46,000 of the Community Preservation Fund 2025 Estimated Revenues to the Reserve for Historic Resources. General law, Chapter 44B, requires that a minimum of 10% of estimated revenues be set aside for historic resources.
I think we're going to do all these together.
Yeah, we're going to...
Go ahead.
Do them all together. I move that the town transfer $46,000 of the Community Preservation Fund 2025 Estimated Revenues to the Reserve for Open Space. General law, Chapter 44B, requires that a minimum of 10% of estimated revenues be set aside for open space. I move that the town transfer $46,000 of the Community Preservation Fund 2025 Estimated Revenues to the Reserve for Community Housing. General law, Chapter 44B, requires that a minimum of 10% of estimated revenues be set aside for community housing. I move that the town appropriate $23,000 for the Community Preservation Fund 2025 Estimated Revenues for Community Preservation Committee Administrative Expenses. And finally, I move that the town transfer $299,000, the balance of the Community Preservation Fund 2025 Estimated Revenues to the Community Preservation Budgeted Reserve.
Second.
Ms. Caswell, if you could just briefly describe the motion?
The Community Preservation Committee did not forward any proposals this year, or in other words, did not approve any proposals to bring to town meeting. So this is moving all of the Community Preservation Funds into budgeted reserve for the future.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? All those in favor of the motion as presented? Opposed? That motion carries. Article 15, Mr. McDaniel?
I move that the town accept the provisions of General Law, Chapter 59, Section 57(c) for the purpose of establishing a quarterly tax payment system to be effective July 1, 2025, fiscal year 2026.
Second.
Mr. McDaniel?
So quarterly bills would provide taxpayers the following. Set due dates each year, i.e. August 1, November 1, February 1, and May 1. Four smaller payments made equally throughout the year. First and second quarterly payments are preliminary and typically based on 50% of the previous fiscal year total. Third and fourth quarter payments are based on the tax rate for the fiscal year as set by the Select Board at the recommendation of the Board of Assessors. The last two payments reflect the total amount of taxes minus the preliminary amounts, which is then divided equally for the two remaining quarters. Changing the quarterly billing system would provide stable cash flow for the town to meet its final, meet its monthly financial obligations. Plan for larger expenditures and cost for mailings and postage is not significant. This would be a significant change for taxpayers. So this article seeks to implement the transition in July 2025 for the fiscal year 2026. Property owners would have an entire year to prepare financially with notices and educational information provided in all mailings and displayed on the website and in all the municipal offices.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor of the motion as presented? Opposed? That motion carries by majority.
Thank you.
Article 16?
Hi, I'm Satu Zoller. I'm Chair of the Tilton Board of Trustees. And I move that the town vote to approve the Board of Trustees of the Tilton Library, filing a petition with the Franklin County Probate and Family Court, or in the alternative, the Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court. Said petition would be seeking certain modifications of the Testamentary Charitable Trust of Chauncey B. Tilton and ratification of past actions of the trustees and certain actions taken by the Tilton Library, Inc., slash Tilton Fund, Inc., in conjunction with the trustees in line with the summary outlined in the letter from the trustees as on file with the town clerk. Such past actions are in connection with the operation and management of the Tilton Library. Actions taken will separate the Tilton Trustees and the Tilton Fund, Inc., and said membership. And further, that the town authorize the Select Board to enter into and approve any necessary filings to accomplish same.
Second.
Ms. Zoller?
In English. So I'm not going to read everything. There's addendum in your packets. But basically, we're responding to correspondence from the Town Council back in 2017 that indicated that the entities of the Tilton Library and the Tilton Fund need to separate. So we plan to identify separate trustees for each of them with several that will cross over for the oversight of related activities. The main issue is that it's not legal for us to have more than six trustees. So we need to decrease our number of trustees. And also that there's a conflict of interest right now. The Tilton Fund and the Board of Trustees should act separately and should not be the same people. Trustees are technically not permitted to raise funds for the library. So to do this, we need to go to, file with the court to officially separate the two entities. Basically, the trustees operate, you know, and manage the library, the expenses, hire the director, all of those day-to-day operations, and the fund is basically to fundraise for the library. So, you know, that's the summary. I can answer questions if people have.
Does anyone have any questions? Yes, if you can make it to a microphone?
Charlene Golinski from 342 River Road. I'm wondering, this sounds like it involves legal expenses. Does it?
All legal expenses are paid by Tilton Fund.
That was my question. Who was paying for the legal? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All those in favor of the motion as presented? Opposed? That motion carries. Article 17, Ms. Caswell?
I move that the town vote to amend the Town of Deerfield General Bylaws, Article 7, Section 10 to 22, Community Preservation Committee as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Ms. Caswell?
This amendment seeks to change the bylaw of the member that determines the membership of the committee to allow a member to be on the committee who's interested in promoting affordable housing. The bylaw right now says that, specifies that a member of the committee who is a resident of Deerfield and who is on the Regional Housing Authority be on the CPC. We don't have a member in town who is on the Regional Housing Authority, and we usually don't have one. So this would allow us to instead have a resident appointed who is a resident and who is interested in affordable housing in Deerfield. And that would also allow us to reliably have a quorum for committee meetings.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. Article 18, Mr. McDaniel?
I move that the town change the use of the parcel of land indicated on the Board of Assessors' records as Map 169, Lot 186, former Alice property, from general municipal purpose to land for disposition and to further authorize the Select Board to convey, sell, or otherwise dispose of said parcel and to authorize the Select Board to enter into and negotiate all necessary documents subject to such restrictions and limitations as the Select Board deems appropriate in order to effectuate the disposition of said parcel in the best interest of the town.
Second.
Mr. McDaniel?
Sure, so this is, anyone understands, this is the property that was storage for the highway garage. It's an old, kind of a barn, right in between the new pilot, the new New Pro building that went in and the old Alice property. The Alice property is no longer there. It was purchased by New Pro. And we're looking to sell that chunk of land that's landlocked in that building and hopefully have another, another place for that storage closer to the highway garage.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion as presented?
Thank you.
Opposed? That motion carries by two-thirds majority. Article 19, Mr. Hiltch?
I move that the town appropriate and transfer from general stabilization $600,000 to fund extraordinary road and sidewalk reconstruction and repairs and for all of the costs related and incidental thereto, including engineering and design.
Second.
Mr. Hiltch?
First, the language in the article was, reflects the original language that was in the article, requesting funding at Special Town Meeting in October 23, 2023. The state authorized Deerfield to deficit spend to make emergency repairs on roads damaged by torrential rains in July 2023, and state law obligates the town to pay off the total amount of deficit spending by June 30, 2024, the end of the current fiscal year. The town anticipates that $600,000 will cover the remainder of expenses for these repairs after deducting a $1.58 million grant from the state and some retained money from a previous storm damage grant from the state.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor of the motion? Opposed? That motion carries by two-thirds. Article 20, Ms. Shores Ness?
I'd just like to take a minute, Mr. Moderator, and I'd like to thank John Pachorek, our police chief, who was our acting EMD, for the hundreds of hours he has put in to help restore and repair our roads. He has been an Energizer Bunny, I have to say. So I'd just like to take a minute. I move that the town rescind all of the borrowing authority approved for the extraordinary road and sidewalk reconstruction and repairs, for all the costs related and incidental thereto, including engineering and design approved through Article 10 of the special town meeting on October 23, 2023, and approved at the special election held on January 16, 2024.
Ms. Shores Ness?
I just want to say that this is for the, when we initially had the damages, this was our initial estimate, and it had to be paid for by June 30th. And so we were consistent all the way through. We really didn't have a choice, even though we knew it was going to cost less. Fortunately, the state, through extraordinary efforts of our legislative delegation, Joe Commerford and Natalie Blay, and working with the governor, every, and Karen Spilka of the Senate President, we were able to get at least $1,580,000 from the state before June 30th. We had 200,000, more than 200,000 left over from the July 21 storms from, again, extraordinary efforts of our legislative delegation that we put towards expenses. But we have now stabilized our roads, and we anticipate not having to use any of the borrowing authority that you all trusted us with, and I want to thank you all very much for.
Hold your breath this July.
Can I make a comment regarding that? This is, I'm Lori Conlin. I live at 5 Hillcrest Avenue. Hillcrest, meaning like literally the crest of a hill up top, and I'm not in any danger of flooding, and I've, I was like heartbroken with all the flooding that I've seen and friends and who have suffered from it and the roads, and I was, I'm so grateful for the advocacy that I saw happen from select persons here, and Natalie Blay, Joe Commerford, involved with Mr. McGovern, Senator Warren was out here, and there was such teamwork from all our representatives in getting us state and federal funding for those repairs. So thank you so much for all your hard work.
Any comments or questions on the motion as presented? All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. Article 21, we have a citizens petition.
Hi, I'm Carrie Echols of Thayer Street. I move that the town authorize and request the select board to petition the General Court of the Commonwealth for home rule legislation to allow any citizens in the town of Deerfield, notwithstanding the provisions of MGL 51, Sections 1 and Section 47a, who have reached the age of 16 or older, to register and vote in municipal elections within the town of Deerfield.
Is there a second?
If approved, this would allow Deerfield to join several other communities petitioning the state to allow 16 and 17-year-olds to vote. It would not take effect immediately. It will go forward for approval by the state legislature. Sunderland became the most recent town to join that group after voting yes on their article on Friday, and Conway and Whately will vote on this in the coming weeks as well. I am the Chair of the Deerfield Elementary School Committee. In April, both the Deerfield and Frontier School Committees voted in favor of a resolution to support this article. According to the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, one of our tasks is to engage in advocacy on behalf of students, and our committees voted in favor of this to show support for our students. This movement also has the support of government and social studies teachers at Frontier, among others. This petition was brought forth due to the work of a group of adults and youth in the four Frontier Regional and Union 38 towns. There are some Frontier students here tonight to read a statement, and Jessica Cormorant of Sunderland is available to answer questions as well. Thank you.
Hey, step right up and go ahead.
Hi, my name is Josie. I live in Sunderland, and we're seventh graders here. I'm one of the students who worked on the citizens petition to lower the voting age to 16, along with other friends and adults. We've gathered signatures to put this issue on the town meeting warrant for Sunderland, Deerfield, Conway, and Whately. Sunderland passed this article to lower the voting age last Friday.
Hello, everyone. My name is Juman. We think that giving voting rights to 16 and 17-year-olds would be good for everyone because it would get us in the habit of voting before we get even busier, making it more likely that we'll vote consistently as adults. We would get to learn more about town politics and town meetings while we still live in our home communities where we already care about the issues around us. Letting 16 and 17-year-olds vote would help increase over participation in town elections because there would be more people, and they would be younger, which can help them make better decisions in the future.
Hi, my name is Ariselli. I know that some people think that 16 is too young to be responsible enough to vote. I wonder if everyone believes that every 18-year-old is responsible enough? What about 25-year-olds? Knowledge and experience are not requirements for voting eligibility. 16-year-olds have many adult rights in Massachusetts, including working a full-time job, paying taxes, getting married, driving a car, and owning or running a business. They are subjected to all these laws but have no say in making them.
If this article passes our select board, we'll ask Natalie Blay and Joe Commerford to file a home rule petition with the state legislature, which must be approved before 16 and 17-year-olds can actually start voting here. Other towns and cities have filed similar petitions without any response, and hope that adding our four Frontier regional towns to this group will force the legislature to act. In other words, the town of Deerfield could eventually be one of the reasons that teenagers in Boston, Lowell, Cambridge, Brooklyn, Southborough, and North Hampton get to vote in their own municipal elections.
Please vote yes on this article to build on current and future democratic engagement in Deerfield and beyond.
Thank you.
Did you have something to add?
I do, yeah.
If you can just introduce yourself.
Yes, I'm Missy Novak. I'm at 87 Sugarloaf. I just wanted to lend some information to this. This is an article that doesn't, doesn't have an immediate action. This is an article that asks the select board to ask the legislators, the legislators to file a home petition rule to allow 16 and 17-year-olds to vote. So this isn't a vote that's going to have an impact in this coming election. If you are concerned about a 16- or 17-year-old who is voting now, don't worry, they'll probably be 18 by the time this happens, and once you hit 18, you don't have to pass a test in order to find out if you are knowledgeable enough to vote. In fact, many of us may remember, maybe not those three, but the older ones may remember a TV show called Are You Smarter Than a Fifth Grader? I bet you those 16 and 17-year-olds will pass a government test far more, at a higher rate than, than we will. We've had a lot of interest from the government and history teachers, and we are really a community that is beholden to people who volunteer many hours of their time for, as we just saw in the budget, not a lot of income. So we really appreciate all the work that you guys do for pennies. So just take a moment. Thank you. So lowering the voting age to 16, as these kids have just relayed, this gives them some stability and a stake in the community that they're involved in to start to build the habit of voting, hopefully to encourage them to follow in your shoes and become involved in the government that they decide to reside in at some point in time, whether it's Deerfield or another community. When they're 18, they're in a transitional point in their life, so they may be moving on to independence, moving to another community. At 16, they're much more likely to be here and develop consistency in their voting habits. The other thing that we see in communities that have passed this kind of legislation or this kind of articles is that not only do the 16- and 17-year-olds turn out at higher rates than the adults do, but they also turn up the adult voter turnout. So, you know, how many of you are here because of this? Because you're interested in either encouraging more kids to vote or maybe not? And why is that? I encourage you to vote yes on this.
Thank you. Hi.
Hi, Lori Conlin, 5 Hillcrest, again. I just want to echo my support in favor of this resolution. I am a parent in this district and have been an educator in this district. I'm now currently in another district, but I do know some of these students personally, and I know that the work that's been done at DES has implemented or inspired this kind of civic engagement, and I'm so proud of that, and I know that comes from the awesome educators that we have at DES who foster critical thinking and value of civic engagement and working for our community, and I'm really proud of the work that these students have put into this. So I hope that everybody will consider it carefully. I also am someone who has canvassed tens of thousands of homes and am really involved in getting out the vote locally, statewide, nationally, and I can tell you that there have been times I've been in college campuses where I like literally beg people to register to vote with lollipops, and then there have been doors that I've been at where I shake my head and say, do I really want this person voting? Except for my, you know, sincere heartfelt wish that everybody has a say in our country and our, our town. So I really take this measure to heart because I think that, while some people may fear about certain factors of 16 and 17-year-olds voting, first remember that this is a first step. It's not voting on that per se, it's voting on a resolution, and it's a first step to have increased discussion at the local level, at the state level, and there'll be a lot more discussion for pros, cons. We can figure that all that out, and there's no reason to squash that now, and just support that these students have raised these really good points and good arguments. And then, truthfully, what the resolution itself, it says, there are 16 and 17-year-olds contributing in a lot of ways to our communities, and they should know that they have a voice, and that is going to inspire them to stay involved, participate, get their friends to participate, get their parents, families to participate, and if there's anything we need, it is that. So I urge you to support this, and we can have further discussion, but vote yes tonight, support these kids, support our, support our town, and support getting people involved in discussions in our community, our town, our state, and our country because we need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir? If we can just, just kill the applause. It's really, it's not permitted under your laws, and if we can just let everyone speak and we'll get through this, get as much information as we can, so go ahead, sir.
Hello, my name is Mark Brennan. I live on Pointon Road. I would just like to ask, what effect would this have on our community? As, as a 14-year-old myself, I own my own business. I pay taxes. I am adding to this town and the state. I would like to ask, how would this affect our turnout? Because as an adult, many of you probably have children or have had children, as an adult, you can affect how they would vote. You could say maybe like, hey, you don't vote for who, X person, you're not allowed to do this, X, you're not allowed to do that. And that could affect how people turn out. It could sway the votes for people that are not, that shouldn't have gotten those votes. And on top of that, also, these, the reason why an 18-year-old can vote is because an 18-year-old can go to war. They can go to war under law. That's why they can vote, because it, it wasn't fair for them to not be able to vote on going to war or not. And for a 16-year-old, they can, they can't go to war. They can't sign a contract, they can't get their own credit card without their parents' permission, and I don't think it's fair for a 16-year-old to not be able to live their life and have to vote on things that they may not agree with.
Thank you. Does anyone from the proponent of the motion wish to respond? Ms. Golinski, then? Thank you. Yes, Ms. Chalafon, go ahead.
I don't want to respond, I want to make a comment.
Okay, well, I'm going to call Ms. Golinski, I'll call you next. Thank you. Go ahead.
Me?
Yes.
Charlene Golinski, 342 River Road. This is a serious article. This isn't anything that we should take lightly. This involves people's taxes. Believe it or not, it is a vote, if 16 and 17-year-olds vote, they could be impacting any taxpayers sitting here to have higher taxes, and this is not probably the best time to talk about taxes because we've heard very high increases in a lot of people's taxes right now. So to add, this article might also add taxes. And my concern is that were these children that put together this article, did they have a conversation about the pros, which they obviously have, and the cons? Because was there ever a discussion about how this could impact the taxpayers in this town? Or was it an excitable moment for young children where they might be able to make a big change in the, in the town, which is very exciting for young children? I, I get it. I was an educator for 37 years. But it is an impactful article, and I went to a Board of Selectments meeting when this article was presented, and I, it was just Carolyn and, and Tim there, and I asked who presented it, and I really didn't get an answer, and then I asked why it came up, and I didn't get an answer. So the only thing I can rely on is what I heard tonight from these children, who did a very nice job. They did an excellent job. But I read four letters to the editor to try to find out what, what is their real intent, and I gleaned three things from it. They want definitely higher voter turnout. They feel people aren't coming out to vote, and that could be for a number of reasons. Mental health was the one that really came into, kind of jumped out at me, that they, they feel, at least two of the articles of the four feel that mental health will decrease if they're allowed to vote at 16. I didn't see any data, but I went and did some research because I wanted to see, is that absolutely true? And I actually have data that I found really disproves that. And the last thing was to show leadership and decision-making, which is something we all do in every classroom every day. So as far as, I just think it's important for people to hear this. This is from the MHA, which is a nonprofit organization which does data on mental health. 16% of kids from ages 12 to 17, or more than 4 million adolescents, have one major depressive episode in 2022. 10% of these children, 6 to 16, have clinically diagnosable mental problems. 70% of childrens and adolescents have mental health problems, and they do not seek appropriate intervention. 50% of mental health problems are established by age 14 and 75% by age 24. These are alarming figures, and I think we can all honestly say COVID has done some really negative things to our young people, and they are, they are struggling with it. They have, you know, they, we see it. We hear about bullying, we hear about... They have, you know, they're, we see it, we hear about bullying, we hear about all kinds of negative things that these poor children are having to undergo. To put another stressor into their lives from sixteen to seventeen, to me, isn't going to help the mental health, it's going to make them more anxious. Do they vote the way their friends do? Do they do what their parents say? Can they stand on their own? There's a lot of questions. So I'm feeling, as a taxpayer, but also as an educator, these children, they're on the road to adulthood, but they're not there yet. It's an honorable measure that this group was very passionate about, you could see it, you could hear it. But I'm feeling it's not the right time. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Chalafon?
I just wanted to offer, hello? Hello? I can go up there. Oh, there it goes, okay. Um, I just wanted to offer some clarifying comments on the Finance Committee recommendation that was printed in the, in the document. Um, the reason it talks specifically about the costs and labor for administering elections is that generally, the Finance Committee doesn't offer an opinion, a recommendation, either for or against, if there's no financial impact. But this actually does have a, a decent sized financial impact on the town. Um, there are, if it passes, and it then passes the legislature, um, then a separate, um, you know, honestly, probably the town clerk would do a better job of explaining this. Um, but there, there are costs in administering this process from the town clerk's office, so we would probably have to increase ours for the town clerk, and you would, there would be additional costs for printing separate ballots, um, because we would no longer be able to have the municipal and state and federal ballots all in one ballot, we'd have to have two. So there are some decent sized costs to passing this. Um, so there are many things that we decide that costs, there, I mean, costs to everything that we do, and often we decide that those costs are worth it. The reason the Finance Committee did not recommend this is that some people on the committee supported it and felt like the costs were worth it, more people on the committee did not support it and did not feel the costs were worth it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Elche?
Um, yes, I'd just like to make a small clarification um, uh, to Ms. Galinsky's comment. Uh, she asked us this question twice, and in both instances, we responded that this was a citizen's petition, it was brought forth by um, educators and students, and that uh, they followed all the laws regarding citizens' petitions, and that we allowed this to be placed on the warrant because they'd followed the laws. Um, I remind people that Prop two and a half began, was a citizen's petition, and it's probably been a good thing for taxpayers, because it's limited the amount of money that we can raise in an annual tax cycle.
Mr. Pareski, did you have a comment?
That's okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp?
Uh, less of a comment, more of a sort of question context. I just wondered if the town clerk um, could let town meeting know how many sixteen and seventeen year olds actually live in Deerfield?
Sure.
Um, currently, there are sixty-three.
Thank you. To the microphone.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Ramelard, I live on Conway Street. Um, for those of you who don't know, I'm also the Senior Center Director. We let older adults who suffer from mental illness and anxiety and depression vote every day, so why should a child not be allowed to vote because they have mental health issues? Um, at sixteen years old, I worked two jobs, I paid taxes, I didn't live here, I lived in Agawam. I worked, I worked all through high school, two jobs. I continued to work until now, I'm forty-eight years old. I also think that allowing young adults to have some agency in their local town government, not national politics, would help relieve any anxiety and depression they have, because everything is forced upon them, they are not allowed to have an opinion to vote on anything that they enjoy. So maybe by allowing our youth to participate in government, we would not have continual vacancies on different boards in our community. We would also have more people interested in what's going on, the fact that these young children, young people have gathered together and are interested in civics is huge. There is such a lack of engagement um, nationwide in our political system, and a lot of people you talk to will say, I'm not interested, I'm staying home. So I think it's encouraging to pass this. The sixty-three people in our community of Deerfield actually could sway an election, because we're a small community, and look at some of the local elections that have occurred, we've had minimal voter turnout. So maybe by having young people advocate for this, it would be really beneficial all the way around for our town, for our youth, and for our government. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Upton?
Yes, good evening, uh, Jeff Upton, Hillcrest Ave. And uh, to start off with, Article twenty-one is a very difficult article to address because of the nature of the being here with the youngsters. I will uh, say that the young students here tonight that address the audience did a great job, and, well done. Uh, the second thing is, when I speak, obviously, there's a lot of grandparents here and parents here, and young people, and this is not to offend anybody, but I oppose this article, and there's several reasons why. To start off with, uh, background very quickly, uh, construction background and education background, thirty-plus years as a teacher and administrator. I dealt with youngsters from age seven up through eighteen. I was in a little different environment, I was a vocational educator and a vocational coordinator, and I did not spend just an hour or two with kids a day. Uh, our system worked where I was with students thirty hours a week. I got to know those students. My career, my teaching career was probably some of the best years of my life. I really enjoyed working with young people. As far as watching maturity, obviously, at your different age levels, you have people, some sixteen years old, very mature, some sixteen year old, very immature. We threw this sixteen, seventeen age bracket on and comparing them to eighteen year olders. If we're gonna do that, I guess my response would be, well, why don't we include thirteen, fourteen, fifteen year olders also? If you're gonna include sixteen and seventeen. Somebody mentioned, well, you know, they can drive at sixteen. Yes, they can. After, they spend hours studying, pass a performance test in a written test, that's when they qualify to get their driver's license and can drive. In this situation, we are dealing with an eighteen million dollar budget, and it's not just the money, but look at the language in some of these articles, especially when you come down to legal language in some of our bylaws. Do we really believe that sixteen and seventeen year olds can fully comprehend that language? A lot of us here struggle with it ourselves, as adults. Let's be honest with each other. And don't get me wrong, I really admire the young people. Now, if we want to make this a learning experience, I don't know if people have heard about capstone projects? Capstone projects in schools are projects that students take on, that involve outside of the school, in the community, things that they can do within the community. Also, I've spent probably, I don't know, Select Board and several other committees can attest to, probably fifteen years, going to meetings, Select Board meetings, Planning Board meetings, Capital Improvement Committee meetings, and so on, school committee meetings occasionally, and guess what? I have not seen one young person there, sixteen or seventeen years old. If you want a learning experience, attend the meetings, and I'm talking about even adults. I started attending probably when I was late fifties on a regular basis, and boy, have I learned a lot about town politics. So if you want these students to learn and to grow, to get them to prepare to vote, I would recommend that they start attending all these meetings, because, boy, you can learn a lot. So, I guess my concern is, is that I don't think sixteen and seventeen year olds are ready for this. And I know the bottom line's gonna be, well, at some point, you know, this is only resolution that, no, the bottom line is they're eventually gonna be able to vote. Now, if people are that confident in this whole process, and financially, can people sit here and tell me that they would allow a sixteen or seventeen year old son or daughter walk into a dealership, car dealership, without any authority looking over them, and allow them to get into a contract, if it was legal, and buy a vehicle? With pavements involved? Please tell me, what family here has allowed a sixteen or seventeen year old student to take over the checkbook, the family checkbook? I'm, I'm sure, I'm gonna get in, don't worry, you don't have to do that. Sixteen or seventeen year old, what family has allowed them to take over the checkbook and run the household? I don't think so. So, and that's nothing to say, there's some-
I'm sorry, no, 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 no.
There's some great kids.
Mr. Upton, if you can wrap up your comments, but there'll be no outbursts, it won't happen, so don't even try. Mr. Upton, if you can finish up, if you have any other points?
Yeah, so my point is, is that I just think it's beyond these students at this point in time, financially and with the language involved.
Thank you. Ms. Dwight?
Lily, um, Lily Dwight, South Mill River Road. I have a question and a couple of quick points. Um, the question is, it, aren't our municipal elections already entirely separate from state and federal, because they happen in May? So I don't know how that adds anything extra.
Town Council?
There, there are times, there, there are times that um, you could have a municipal election at the same time as a state or federal election, so if you had to have an override or a debt exclusion or special election, they could be scheduled at the same time, because oftentimes they are for convenience.
Okay, thank you. The other, the point I want to make is that um, there are five cities in Maryland and two in California, with more on the way, who have already approved this kind of legislation. In Tacoma Park, Maryland, since twenty thirteen, they have been allowed to vote. That is a prosperous community. Uh, sixteen year olds, they can be tried as an adult and go to prison. I think that we should give them the voice to speak for themselves and how they feel about their community. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Cabaco?
Yes, I'm Julie Cabaco from North Hillside Road. Um, we heard that there's sixty-three sixteen and seventeen year olds, um, our population is downsizing, as I understand it, from the last couple of years. The other thing I want to mention is, I think we only have maybe nineteen hundred registered Very small um, amount, and I don't think it's gonna make a big impact on the elections in the long run. And when we think about the actual percentage of how many of those four thousand and one actually vote, that same percentage could actually go to the sixty-three, and we might only have four people. So, I don't think it's gonna throw the, the vote.
Thank you. Ms. Zoller?
Yes, Satya Zoller, uh, South Mill River Road. My feeling on this is that, you know, so many people complain about kids being disaffected and disengaged and, you know, not caring and all that, and I think anything that gets our youth involved and interested, and look what we've seen tonight, they're engaged students, they, they want to contribute to our town, so I'm like, why, why, what's the fear of? Like, what are we worried about? As Julie said, it's like one percent of uh, the turnout or so of our town. And I'm originally from Germany, and in Germany, people vote at sixteen, and it hasn't caused huge problems. Um, in fact, it's actually raised voter turnout. So, you know, so I just say, let's give it a try, it doesn't hurt, and it probably will make things better here. Thanks.
Thank you. Sir?
Jason Clark, North Main Street. Um, I just want to say with all due, due respect here, I was here a couple of meetings ago, and I actually, after about two times to the microphone, I was cut off, and it was a call to a vote, so I'd like to make a motion to actually just call this.
There's been a motion to call the vote, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So, at that point, uh, that would terminate all debate, and we're just taking a motion right now on whether to call the question. So what that means is, you're not voting on the underlying petition as of yet, just whether we're going to vote on it, and this requires a two-thirds majority, so all those in favor of the motion to call the question? All those opposed? That motion carries by two-thirds majority, so we'll move right to the question. All those in favor of the motion as presented?
Can you repeat that question, Jerry?
Yes, so we're, we're now voting on the underlying motion, so the motion that was made was, um, I move that the town authorize and request the Select Board to petition the General Court of the Commonwealth for home rule legislation to allow any citizen in the town of Deerfield, notwithstanding the provisions of Mass. General Laws fifty-one, Sections one, and Sections forty-seven A, who have reached the age of sixteen or older to register and vote in municipal elections within the town of Deerfield. So that's, that's what you're voting on. All those in favor of the motion as presented? All those opposed? Uh, I'm gonna go back, I'm gonna have to, to count, I'm sorry. So, all those in favor of the motion, if you can just keep your hands up, you guys can wait if you want, I'll just do it section by section, if you don't want to hold your arms up, so I'll tell you.
We need some help.
I do not need any help, but thank you. I need help, but not with this. Thank you, Section one can put their arms down. Section two? We're all set on this section, and I didn't count the people standing in the back, so just keep yours up, thank you. There's no one over in this section? I'm sorry, thank you. Uh, I'm gonna recount, so if you all can put your hands up in the back here, I'm sorry, I didn't see you in the front, or you hadn't, I didn't direct, I'm sorry. Uh, first section's all set. You're all set, thank you. Third section, it, third section should have it up, anyone at the door that's voting, it's opposed? Anyone at the door that's opposed? You're all set, thank you, give me a moment. I move that the meeting adjourn to meet at the polls in the meeting room of the town offices of Conway Street in the Village of South Deerfield on May 6, 2024 at 10:00 a.m. for the purpose of elections, and at the closure, the polls dissolve. Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everyone. The motion is continued, the meeting's continued, thank you.
I made a motion at the Select Board meeting.
I'll second that motion.